Good morning, councillors. Please stay standing whilst I invite my chaplain, the Reverend Canon Sudashan, to lead prayers. Sorry, excuse me.
Let us pray. Almighty and loving Father, your mercies are new every morning. We thank you for gathering us here today. I thank you for every councillor representing their own constituents. We thank you for their service, their dedication, sometimes under pressure, sometimes criticised and detested, but still they carry on. We thank you, Lord, for their commitment. We pray, even as they are here today, guide them with your wisdom, bless them with your presence. We bring before you what we are about to discuss today. Guide our thoughts and bless us today. And shine your face upon us. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen. In confidence, rejoicing in the presence of God among us, let us say the prayer that Jesus taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Kindly done, honored as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive them that trespass against us. Lead us not into temptations, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Right, I will start by asking the chief executive, Debbie Barnes, to report if there are any apologies for absence.
Thank you very much. I can confirm we have received apologies from councillor Danny, councillor Davy, councillor Hassan, councillor Thompson, councillor Mrs Killie, councillor Young, and councillor Ashley Morris will be late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Linda Wooton, who is not well.
Thank you. Right.
I may have missed it, but councillor Robert Parker sends his apologies.
Right. Councillor Parkin?
I am here now, obviously, but I will be needing to leave between 12.30 and 12.45, depending where we are on the business.
Thank you. We move then now on to declarations of interest. Do councillors have any further interests that they would like to declare other than what you have already registered? Thank you. Seeing none, then we move on. Item three, the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 9th of December 2022. Right. The minute we move that the minutes of the meeting. Yes. Yes, the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 9th of December 2022 be approved as a correct record and signed by the chairman. All in favour? Councillor Dyer?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick one. My question to councillor Davy isn't recorded in the minutes. Thank you.
Right, I think we look into that then afterwards, if that meets your approval. Right, so if I may sign the minutes then with that proviso. Thank you. And all in favour then? Thank you. Right, I now move on to item four, the chairman's announcements. I'll stand up for this if you like. Right, since the last meeting of the council, I've continued to represent the county council and carry out civic engagements. I was delighted to welcome students from the University of Lincoln for the Model United Nations Debate as part of their International Relations Programme, which was held here in the council chamber earlier this year. This annual event is an important part of their studies and demonstrates the collaboration and long-running successful partnership between the university and this county council. On the 31st of January, we held a service to mark the 70th anniversary of the East Coast floods of 1953, which seriously affected our coastal communities and sadly, as we know, claimed the lives of 43 people. I can personally remember that day as a young child living in Curden in safety, and it was heartwarming to attend the service at Ingham Mills and afterwards speak to the guests and hear their stories about how their families were affected. We look forward to the coronation of His Majesty King Charles III on the 6th of May 2023. The coronation will see people across the UK and the Commonwealth come together to celebrate this momentous occasion. Nationally, the programme will include the procession and service at Westminster Abbey on the 6th of May, the big coronation lunch across the county, across the country, sorry, on the 7th of May, and the help-out, big help-out community activity on the bank holiday, Monday the 8th of May. I know that you will all be involved in events in the heart of your local communities over that weekend, and we will be throwing open the doors of Lincoln Castle so that residents can watch the coronation on a large screen on the Saturday and bring their own picnics, weather permitting, I hope, to join us for the coronation big lunch on the Sunday. I added that proviso because I can remember the weather on the last coronation day. Watch out, please, on social media and in the local press for the details of our plans for what is bound to be a weekend to remember. A complete itinerary of civic engagement since the last meeting of this council is available from the civic office on request. Right, we will now move on to questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors and chairman of committees and subcommittees. In so far as it prevents the asking of questions at the annual budget meeting, I move that the council procedure rule 10.2 be suspended for the duration of item five on the agenda. Do I have a second there?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'm happy to second. Thank you.
Can we now vote on this temporary suspension to the council procedure rule, please? All in favour? Thank you, that's Carrie. Right, moving now then on to the questions. I'm anxious to allow a good spread of questions across the chamber within the time allocated. I intend to allow 45 minutes for questions. I am expecting councillors to be disciplined, please, because of the time available. When invited to ask the questions, councillors should press the button on the microphone to make it live and press it once again when they have finished. Right. Right, my first question then is councillor Mike Clark to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. I was pleased to read in the County News about the benefits of using recycled material on the repairs of our roads. There are a number of facts listed which are very useful, but could you please indicate the financial savings to the county council for this project? Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you up and about as well, Mike. In terms of the retread recycling, we save about £7 million a year. Sorry, we spend about £7 million a year on retread, and it's about £18, between £17 and £18 a square metre for a repair, compared to about between £25 and £30 for more conventional dressing. So before we even start talking about reduced transport costs, reduced, you know, better carbon capture and reuse of materials, it saves us getting on for £100,000 a year. The other big advantage, of course, is because we collect material as we scrape off road, it enables us to reuse it. So we're not buying in material and we're recycling, which we know is good. So it's an effective measure. Initially, we did it on places like, I think, Oyster Fen Road in Claypole was one of the first places. Fen Road is particularly good at because it recreates the road and gets you that new structure and carriageway. But we are trying it on residential streets as well. It's not so good on A roads where there's lots of heavy traffic, though, but for lower usage roads, it's brilliant. Thank you.
Our second question is from councillor Karen Lee to councillor Richard Davies.
Thanks, Chair. My question, councillor Davies, focuses on the fibre broadband work being undertaken around Lincoln. The work on the Ermine East started just before Christmas. It went on for several weeks. It was shoddy. The paths and roads have got great trenches down the middle, even though they've finished, and the grass verges have been absolutely decimated, especially down there at Ermine Library. It's awful. Work was started, they dug holes, and instead of following on with the next bit two or three days later, in many, if not most cases, it was two to three weeks. It was absolutely appalling, and I know people have campaigned about telegraph poles too. At this stage, I want to publicly thank our highways officers. They were brilliant. I complained to them. They came back to me, they were prompt, they held the fibre companies to account, and it took up an awful lot of their time as well, time when they could have been doing other things. What I want you to do, I want to ask your opinion about the standard of the work, the length of time it takes. I want you to confirm what the county's role is, because I know this comes from central government and we've only got limited control locally. But I think most importantly, how can local residents and district councillors complain and get that accountability that I managed to get? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question, and it's very valid. To answer your specifics, I think a lot of the work that's been done, both here and on the East Coast, the quality is very poor. It's not very timely, and they haven't done a very good job at all. There is a counterpoint that people want superfast broadband. So, you know, we are very keen and on Lincolnshire's delivered superfast broadband, working with these companies and other companies in this sphere massively, and it's positive. I think the particular issues we've had here in Lincoln are a failure to cooperate. Our teams, our permitting teams tried very hard to get, and wow, I don't think I received parliamentary privilege here, so I need to be careful what I say, looking at the legal officer. But despite best efforts, they were unable to get them, for example, to share ducts, which would have made perfect sense. And we have a ridiculous situation in some areas in your wards and elsewhere. I think councillor Parker down in Birchwood as well, where you've got poles going up next to freshly dug trenches. Unacceptable. We've also had cases where some of the trenching hasn't been done to the requisite standard, and it's starting to dip down. Now, in that instance, we do have powers because we can make them come back and redo the trenching. If they do something that's dangerous or unsafe on the highway, then we have control. Unfortunately, we have no legal powers to enforce people to do things a certain way just because we don't like the aesthetics. And I have a lot of sympathy for residents who have voiced concerns about the way in which this has been done. I think there's been a lack of consultation, hasn't been clear what's being done. And I actually feel sorry for some of the guys on the ground as well, and sorry, the operatives on the ground installing, doing some of these works, because I think they've been on the receiving end of decisions higher up the food chain. But as a highways authority, and I thank you for your comments about the team, the only time we have powers to stop people doing things is when it's dangerous or unsafe on the highway. Now, I am aware that people have questioned, why have some works not gone ahead? That's because people have applied to us for a permit, and we weren't happy with the timescales or the methods of construction. They then come back to us and reapply for a permit, a bit like all the other utility companies. We can't say to a broadband company, you are not putting up poles because we want you to trench. We don't have that power. However, we are able to say when they come to us that it isn't safe, go back to the drawing board, come back to us. But that's only really delaying the installation of works. It doesn't stop it. We have organised a briefing for all county councils, which I know you've been invited to, where the permitting team and the broadband team will give all of county councils an update on exactly what the situation is. I think you are best placed to interface with your communities, and I'd say to residents, please speak to your county councillor. They can give you the most up-to-date information, and dare I say, don't believe everything you read on the internet.
Thank you. Moving on, our next question is from councillor Richard Cleaver to councillor Richard Bootroyd.
Thank you. Councillor Bootroyd, please could I ask you to undertake, to provide whatever assistance you can to Stamford Town Council to help them find premises in which to re-establish a museum for Stamford, by engaging with them and with South Caithen District Council, please? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cleaver. Certainly wish to facilitate whatever the council can in Stamford. We need to probably get some of our officers to see what the requirements would be and whether we've got any buildings or anything that we could look to make available. But obviously, at this stage, I couldn't answer you any more than that. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Councillor Stephen Barney with a question for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you. Councillor Davies, could you please explain what Lincolnshire County Council is planning to do to improve the safety for the road users and residents in surrounding villages on the stretch of the A15 to the north of the junction with the A631 Cambridge Corner? On Tuesday this week, the road was closed for most of the day as a car transporter, as a result of travelling too fast, overturned and spilled its load over the whole carriageway. The second such incident in a year. The same site has also been the location of several other major accidents. The speed of the traffic and the predominance of HGVs travelling across the road in both directions make residents of surrounding villages like Bishop Norton and Attabey very nervous when trying to turn from the side lanes onto the A15 as they go about their daily business. Scampton, Hemswell Cliff and Emingham are currently undergoing a lot or about to undergo a lot of economic development. This will increase the amount of traffic on the road, adding to the danger and problems of this stretch. Dual caraging would help a lot, but it's probably beyond the available budget. Therefore, what other alternative measures are in the pipeline?
Yeah, thank you. You're absolutely right. Dualling the A15 is unrealistic, a for financial reasons, also, I think, historically reasons, because it's such an ancient road. The amount of archaeology would mean it would be next to impossible. It would make more sense if you were going to embark upon that to build a new road somewhere else. The reality is that we have an issue here of perception rather than fact. Road Safety Partnership, they're rerunning their analysis, but they constantly look at Lincolnshire's roads. They do stretch analysis, they do junction analysis, and the A15 is not a section of road they've highlighted as being one of our most dangerous. So it isn't where we are directly prioritising at the moment. We continue to look at issues around speed, which I know is an issue, and over, and particularly around HGVs going over the edge. And we are, where possible, unfortunately, we don't own most of the land either side of the road, so we're limited what we can do in terms of reinforcing the verges. But we do ask drivers to kind of drive carefully into the conditions because it's not one of our most dangerous roads here in Lincolnshire.
Right, the next question is from councillor Alex Mawn. An unusual situation to councillor Tom Dyer, who I believe is answering on behalf of councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you, Chairman. Long Bennington in my division suffered severe flash flooding in 2015 and many smaller flooding events since. And as a result, Lincolnshire County Council has been working hard with the local community over recent years to develop plans for a village-wide flood alleviation scheme in order to reduce the future risk of flooding to our village. I would like to ask councillor Dyer for an update on this project, please, and assurances that the planned works on the ground will commence over the coming months. Thank you.
Councillor Dyer?
Thank you very much, Chairman. And before I answer the question, I'd just like to thank you for clarifying that it's me and not councillor Davy answering the question because at a recent event councillor Mawn introduced me to a stakeholder as councillor Davy's son, so just clearing that up. But on a serious note, Chairman, councillor Mawn has tenaciously campaigned for this scheme, and I'm pleased to report that good progress continues to be made in anticipation of delivering the surface water flood alleviation scheme for Long Bennington this summer. Following the flash flooding in Long Bennington in 2015 and some smaller subsequent events, the county council has made a commitment as part of its capital flood risk programme to deliver a scheme in Long Bennington. Due to the associated costs of delivering such a scheme, national grant in aid funding has also been applied for in addition to funding committed by this authority to maximise the benefits that can be delivered. A recent significant project milestone is the approval of the outlined business case by the Environment Agency's National Assurance Board, meaning this project has received financial approval for the allocation of grant monies. The scheme will look to address the surface water flooding issues experienced across large parts of the village and will include the construction of 52 new road gullies plus connections, 10 new manholes and 480 metres of new 600-millimetre carrier pipe with a new outfall into the River Wytham situated to the east of the village. In combination, this will ensure there is much improved capacity within the village to deal with any future events, although, of course, we can never say that no flooding will occur in the future, but the likelihood, it will be greatly reduced. In working towards the delivery, I can also confirm that the tender for this scheme has gone live and will run until the 7th of March 2023 to allow contractors to submit their proposed bids. I'd just like to give reassurance, Madam Chairman, that everything is being done to ensure that this will be achieved and that the intention is to commence the main site works on the 15th of May, and that's 2023, this year. In closing, officers are working closely with members of Long Bennington Parish Council with a plan to hold a public drop-in session to provide information on these forthcoming works. It is currently planned to hold this event towards the end of March, and details will be published closer to the date, once that has been confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dyer. Right, we're moving on then. The next question is from councillor Andrew Key for councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. With regard to pothole repairs, I'd like to ask for reassurance that Lincolnshire County Council monitors the quality of repairs. If a repair fails and has to be redone, what recourse do we have to the contractor for a revisit to be done without extra cost to this authority? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So far this year, we've done nearly 30,000 pothole repairs with only a tiny fraction requiring a revisit. It very much depends on what the type of repair is. We get what we call a temporary emergency repair, which is a safety defect, where we would expect the crews to go out and make the issue safe. The costs of which depend very much on how quickly we expect that repair. We inspect not as many as probably we would like. In an ideal world, if money was no object, you'd inspect all repairs. But of those we respect, less than 1% require us to instruct the contractor to go back. That revisit is done entirely at the contractor's expense, providing they've delivered the pothole in accordance with our wishes. We typically expect a sawcut pothole in the middle of the road in good conditions to last about five years with a first fix. Edge damage is much more harder to say, so maybe a year. But it falls outside that kind of period of life, then we'll instruct the contractor to go back at their cost. So it makes sense that first-line fixes are done all the time.
Thank you. Moving on then, our next question is from councillor Kevin Clark for councillor Danny McNally.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor, was contacted by a resident who was turned away from the Great Northern Terrace Recycling Centre due to a vehicle being too high to go under the barriers there. The vehicle was actually a camper van. They followed an exchange of emails on the issue, including one from yourself. However, the solution on the issue wasn't found. Fly tipping is on the increase. You can witness this daily online, and also Lincoln has 90% more instances than last year. Bearing this in mind, where waste is clearly domestic, will the council review its policy and introduce a system to address the situation described, therefore helping to reduce fly tipping? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clark, for the question. The fly tipping issue has got nothing to do with people not being able to access the sites. The sites are, people can access them. Vans are allowed in as long as they've got a permit and they're under two metres. If it's a mobility converted vehicle that's over two metres, it can access the site. And ultimately, if the resident has got a camper van and it's over two metres, he can't access it. And I'm afraid, you know, we all make decisions in life, and it's their decision to buy a camper van that's over two metres. But he can contact the city council for collection. He can ask a neighbour, he can ask a friend to take it. There is options out there, but the high buyer is staying. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McNally. Right, next question is from councillor Ashley Baxter for councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you, Chair. May I put my question to councillor Dyer in councillor Davy's absence?
If councillor Dyer is prepared to receive it, yes. Or he will pass. Thank you. Thank you. Or, of course, he will pass it on to councillor Davy.
Smashing. Thank you. Crowland Abbey, Peterborough Cathedral and Bury St Edmund's Abbey were all constructed in the Middle Ages largely from Barnack stone, quarried in Barnack, which is on the deeping side of Stamford. So for the best part of 1,000 years, the borderlands of Lincolnshire and Cambridgeshire have been, and at times Northamptonshire, have been supplying minerals for major projects inside and outside the county. The lands around Baston, Langtoft and West Deeping are already littered with pits and lakes and quarries, which are the product of decades of relentless mineral abstraction. A recent consultation on, or rather, an engagement exercise undertaken by this county council concerning future mineral and waste extraction has terrified residents in these villages, particularly Baston, Langtoft and West Deeping. In some cases, if developers get their way, these residents will be surrounded on virtually all sides by quarries and their noise and their traffic, potentially for decades. One of the arguments that is being used against large-scale solar PV schemes across the county and in my division is the potential loss of good-quality agricultural land. The same argument is equally valid, if not more valid, in relation to quarrying. What reassurance can the administration offer to residents who are frightened that they will lose yet more of their beautiful landscape and communities and agricultural land to the heavy industrial processes of mineral abstraction? Thank you.
Councillor Dyer, have you had warning of that question?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Baxter was courteous enough to give me advance sight of his question, so I thank you for that, councillor Baxter. We are aware of the local interest and concerns regarding the potential allocation of a new quarry site in the market deeping area. There is a defined statutory process for local plan-making, and that process is being followed with key milestones in the process allowing for member input and scrutiny.
followed with key milestones in the process allowing for member input and scrutiny. That process also allows for member consultation where the key issues of concern will be fully considered. It would be inappropriate to circumvent that process, which could result in future legal challenge from the industry, who should expect their proposed sites to be given due consideration. I would like to reassure you though, councillor Baxter, that at this stage, no decisions have yet been made.
Thank you. Right, moving on again. My next question is from the vice chairman, councillor Robert Reed to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, chairman. We've all seen councillor Davies, the work and the progress of major schemes, but looking forward to the smaller ones that are being delivered. What are the plans, could you tell us, that are forthcoming? And before doing so, as a member, I'd like to actually herald the member portal scheme, which I found most beneficial to my division and up-to-date information, which is really helpful at parish councils. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. And yeah, I'm pleased that you mentioned the portal, actually. I think it's a really good tool that we're rolling out. And incidentally, by April, we're hoping to put the forward programme for schemes into the portal. So you'll be able to see that breakdown and hopefully it'll be things that you recognise, that you'll have discussed with myself and your local highways manager. But broadly speaking, I think over the next three years, we've got over a thousand small schemes planned across the county and these range from curb schemes through to footways to crossings. And it's personally my view, I mean, and the big schemes are brilliant, but kind of being a local councillor, it's about delivering on these relatively minor improvements. You know, it's pedestrian crossings where they're needed, it's changes to junction layouts, it's little bits of footpath, it's minor scheme, you know, resurfacing programmes. That's really the heart of, I think, what it means to be a local councillor and that's where things are being delivered. I have the full list, there's a lot on our website already in terms of the forward programme. Wouldn't want to prejudge the budget, but hopefully we'll be delivering in line with that. But as I say, as of April, you'll be able to get a breakdown for your area. But if members have got particular questions or concerns, please do let me know. And if there are schemes you'd like to bring forward in your area, make sure I know about them.
Thank you, councillor. We move now to councillor Marianne Overton, MBE, with a question for councillor Martin Hill, OBE.
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. I think this is straightforward. Bidding for funds takes time, money and expertise. And I wonder if the leader and I, if we could do more to get those fundings to be secure long term, rather than constantly in a bidding war with other councils. The multi-year settlements are needed for the council, but also in terms of all of the grants that we're applying for are year by year. And it does make it very difficult when you're trying to get, build up, for example, businesses that will support retrofitting of housing, for example. But the situation is much wider and it is a policy that we need to set, to get the government to set with us. The same is true for councils and as for residents who are bidding for funds for their communities. And our council here used to have really good support for community facilities, where we provided both money and staff to give a really targeted support, this village hall in this community, and this is the help available, to draw in millions, millions into the county. And I just wonder if there is some way in which we could work together to recover that situation where we do give long-term support to particular projects in a much more effective way. Yes, we support the voluntary centres, but actually, I feel we need to do some more, some more focused support that will really bring money into Lincolnshire for our communities. Thank you.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you for the question. I think there were two parts to it. One was the national situation and also the local. In terms of the national, as councillor Overton is well aware, the LGA and representatives of local government are lobbying government ministers to say this system of competitive bidding between all councils to get funding projects is probably not the best way forward. And I think we would argue, all local government would argue, really just to evolve, devolution is probably the answer. That just give us the money locally, which you are holding centrally, particularly the previous money which used to come from Europe, that we can locally decide what is the best way forward. And although we have had, we've got a pretty impressive track record actually in actually achieving and receiving grant funding from government, it's not always successful. For example, the Bus Improvement Grant, I think it was called, we weren't successful. But officer time and resource has been put into building up these bids. And I'm told ministers accept that it's not a best use of anybody's resources and causes disappointment, of course, because for every successful bid, there are many others who are unsuccessful, as we heard from the recent levelling up allocation of funding. So I think that is a point well made. To me, the answer is about devolution and actually just handing the money over across the piece to local governments and let local people, local councillors decide what is best for them without having to jump through some hoops and then sometimes even if you fulfil the criteria, you're not successful, which is very, very frustrating. In terms of more local devolution of fund and all the rest of it, I do take the point. Obviously, we had, in the past, we had to be far, we could be far more generous than we are now because obviously since 2010, we've had very much to constrain our spending and make sure that we're able to balance our books. But what I would say, however, in the budget which is coming, if that is agreed, there is a fund there, which is the, what we're calling the Development Fund, where some extra money will go in. And I think throughout the year, there will be some conversations about how that money should be spent throughout the year. And, you know, and we would welcome input from all councillors as to how we can, we can actually develop that funding and make sure it goes out to the residents of our county to best effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we move on now. A question from councillor Matt Bowles to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Davies, it's now over five years since we first met in Gainsborough Town Centre to discuss town centre parking. I think it's fair to put on record that yourself and councillor Perriton-Williams have been fully supportive of residents and businesses making that request. However, like I say, we're now five years on, we've seen nothing installed as yet. Dozens of businesses have closed in the town centre area. We know that West Lindsay District Council have been the main obstacle in this and put a lot of obstacles in the way that we have debunked in these five years. I felt really reassured after the last two Transport Strategy Board meetings that we were moving in the right direction. At the last meeting back in December, we agreed a decision to try and install, a trial install was agreed. Nothing to date has happened. I've sent, we've sent, me and councillor Young have sent a couple of emails asking for updates. We've received nothing to date. I'm conscious that the next scheduled meeting isn't till April. Are you able to provide me with an update on progress, where we are, either today or offline if possible, please? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. It's fair to say it's been torturous, hasn't it? We are moving ahead. It's a case of getting the legal orders outlined and designed and trying to get some agreement. What we're trying to do is get to a place where we can at least get the district council reasonably comfortable with our trial, because what we don't want to do is lots of objections in court processes and, because all that does is it gives money to solicitors and lawyers, it doesn't actually get anything done. But you're right, and this I think serves as a good warning for other areas of the county. What we've seen in Gainsborough with the way that development has progressed is the town centre has been crushed. You know, it's depressing when you go there with the greatest respect and I admire anybody who's trying to operate a business there at the moment. I think it's important that we get visitors back into the town centre. Banning cars is not the answer, it's not working, is the point. The Transport Board are pretty solid on this. I'll chase it through and I'll come back to you offline.
Thank you, councillor. All right, my next question is from councillor Mark Whittington to councillor Richard Davies.
Thank you very much indeed, madam chairman. Richard, my question relates to the recently called active travel scheme in Grantham. Now, I know when it was being discussed at the consultation, I was receiving comments and representations from residents, some in favour, some against. And I think when the final consultation results came out, I think 48% were in favour, 44 against, with the rest not expressing an opinion. I'm really, writing on about one of my own particular residents, who you probably are aware of the individual, who's the local lead for Cycling UK. And he's contacted me to say, will a future revised active travel scheme for Grantham come forward or not? So just an update on where we are around Grantham and active travel schemes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. For colleagues that weren't aware, there was an outline proposal to kind of make Grantham High Street one-way. We went out to consultation and it's fair to say it wasn't universally popular. There was a lot of negativity around of it and I think, I don't think we have enough support to push forward with it at the moment. And I think one of the comments that people have discussed and we've discussed internally is, bearing in mind, you know, the Grantham bypass is moving ahead, it's going to be open in the next year or so at the very latest, hopefully. It makes sense probably to put things on hold until we've moved the A52 out of Grantham in order that that can take place, because I think the town centre will feel very different without that road going through the middle. But absolutely cycling will be, you know, cycling and sustainable walking are key. One of the barriers to walking into a market town, and it applies to, coincidentally, at Gainsborough as well as Grantham, is those road barriers in the middle make it different, difficult to go that final third, actually. You can get to the edge of the town centre quite well, but when, you know, Sand Augustine Way or even the High Street in points is almost a dual carriageway, it's a real barrier to cycling and walking. So once we've got those vehicles out, we can review again.
Thank you, councillor Davies. Next, we have councillor Phil Dilks for councillor Richard Bootroyd.
Thank you, madam chairman. Good morning all. To councillor Bootroyd, I welcome your recent support for the Deepings community in exploring the options for reopening the Deepings Leisure Centre at the Deepings School. It was particularly useful, and I thank you, though it was shocking, to be allowed in to have a look at the centre recently and to see what an awful state it was in when handed back by Southcasterburn District Council and frankly, to see how repairs had been bodged over a number of years. I also welcome the support of the right honourable Sir John Hayes MP, our local MP, who told colleagues last week that he's keen to be involved in efforts to restore a swimming pool and leisure activities to the Deepings community as soon as possible. Could I ask you please to confirm that no major decisions will be taken as owners of the site relating to the site without meaningful consultation with all stakeholders, including Deeping residents? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dilks. It was, it was good to meet up and walk round there with you and that was my first opportunity to walk around the building as well. As you know, and being the local member, I tried to keep you informed and updated with everything that is happening there. We're still investigating, we've still, we've appointed a contractor to go and do a survey on the site, do a survey of the structure. And although above ground, the structure looks in reasonable condition with regards to stillwork, we still need to look at that because there is past history on the site of degradation of stillwork below ground level. So that's sort of our main thing at the moment. So we really need to get all the information back. Hopefully, that will be in the next two to three weeks and then we can look at making a decision of the lifespan or what the potential lifespan is of that structure. And then from there, we'll make a decision. But totally want to work with the local community as much as we can, but obviously, that decision might be taken out of our hands with regard to the future of the building. We just need to have that fuller assessment first. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Right, penultimate question. Councillor Colin Matthews for councillor Lindsey Corey, please.
Thank you very much, chairman. Probably many of you like me were appalled and shaken by the reportage on the tragic and devastating earthquakes in Turkey and Syria. To follow events, I was watching the BBC one evening and I was very pleased to see a Lincolnshire fireman reporting recovery successes. I was also very pleased to see Colin the Dog. Please, would you be kind enough to tell us a little bit more about our presence there? And please, would you undertake to feed back to the firemen my personal thanks because I wish I could have been there with them. It was a really horrible event and anything we can do was magnificent. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Could I say I think we would all wish to send our thanks. Councillor Corey?
Thank you, chairman, and thank you councillor Matthews for your question. Our firefighters joined a team of 77 from the UK deployed on the 7th of February and this deployment was made up from 14 fire services across the UK and dedicated medics and building engineers. The four from Lincolnshire made up this team and I want to name them and thank them. And they were Ash Hildred, Colin Callum, Mark Dungworth and Neil Woodmansey and the search dog, Colin. The international search and rescue team, ISAR, were deployed as a foreign Commonwealth and Development Office mission. This is a voluntary role that uses the urban search and rescue skills and equipment that they have. They were conducting operations within 48 hours of when the request came in from the Turkish government to the FCDO for international assistance and our firefighters operated in the Hatay region of Turkey. During their deployment, they were actively involved in eight rescues, during which Colin the search dog, as people may have seen, sustained an injury on his leg that required stitches. But happily, after a couple of days, he was back to, back on active service and continued his role as a search dog. The skills required of our firefighters to perform these roles are as a result of the fantastic training they receive at our Waddington training site. Most of the 77 deployed personnel from across the UK have at some point during their training received training at Waddington. And it's worth noting that we have a dozen ISAR-trained personnel in Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue who are just as likely to be deployed at any time. I'm happy to report that the team flew home from Stansted Airport on Wednesday evening. And as is the way, our firefighters will be conducting press interviews this afternoon and then will have a time with their loved ones before they return back to their normal duties. And it's also, I want people to know, that full support is being provided for their wellbeing following the prolonged exposure to those harrowing events in Turkey. And also, it's worth saying that the whole team have operated with extreme courage and empathy throughout and operated in the most challenging and heartbreaking circumstances. But the rescues they have made has helped give much-needed hope in an appallingly desperate situation. So thank you for your question, councillor. And thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Corey, and I think the spontaneous applause speaks for itself. Right, my final question this morning is from councillor Paul Skinner to councillor Richard Bootroyd.
Thank you, madam chairman. Councillor Bootroyd, with firefighters very much being in the news at the moment and Lincolnshire indeed has some of the best equipment and some of the best facilities, may I ask whether there is any progress with the Leverton Fire Station replacement, which is in Boston Coastal, My Ward? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Skinner. Just before I answer that question, I just wanted to add my, about how proud I was really of Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue and what they've done out there in Turkey. I think Lindsey and Paul have probably taken some of the things I was going to say, so I can scrub them out. But I think it was just a general, this council really seems very supportive and always supported fire and rescue. We've got a few projects, from my point of view, on the property team. We're obviously doing works at Grantham Fire Station. We're obviously doing works at Grantham Fire Station to improve that at the moment. We're looking at Waddington Training Extension, which I think has been key through the training of our fire and training nationally for emergency services. So, we really are looking to support Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue in Lincolnshire and that brings me on to Levertown. I can, after probably a little bit of a slow start, we, we've now agreed heads to terms with the vendor of the land and we're working through the legal services at the moment to, to secure that plot to build a new fire station. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. I think we kept that within the time schedule. Right, we are now moving on then to the councillor, the council budget for 2023 to 24. The executive director, the leader will be giving his report soon shortly and amendments have been submitted by the independent group and the Labour Group and I plan to deal with this item as outlined in the Order of Proceedings and have one debate. I therefore move that there will be one debate on the executives' budget proposals and the independent group and the Labour Group amendments and therefore the council procedure rules, 13.4 regarding the content and length of speeches, 13.6B, 13.6C and D and E amendments to motions and 13.10B, motions which may be removed during the debate be temporarily suspended for the duration of the debate and that debate takes place as set out on page four of the Order of Proceedings. Do I have a second for that, please?
Yes, madam chairman.
Thank you. Can we now have a vote on the temporary suspension to council procedure rules, please? All in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Right, we now move to the report from the leader councillor Martin Hill.
I will now give my annual budget speech to the council. We all hope for the last year, that last year would bring a more stable time around the world following the upheaval of so much of our daily lives during the Covid pandemic. However, it's certainly been tumultuous to say the least. Since I gave my previous budget speech, we have had three prime ministers, four levelling up secretaries of state and local government ministers and five housing ministers. Thankfully, governance is a lot more stable here in Lincolnshire as we continue the important but less dramatic delivery of services and investment for the future. The global economic crisis has had a profound effect on everyone. In the UK, the knock-on effects of the pandemic on our public services and our nation's finances have been magnified by Putin's invasion of Ukraine and led to high inflation and workforce shortages. Since early 2020, the council's operating environment has been immensely volatile and this shows little sign of changing in the short term. Inflation has risen to unprecedented levels, peaking at 11.1% in October 22 and is expected to remain at high levels for a long period. As well as the implications for this house for our residents and businesses, the council itself has a lower spending power because of these financial conditions. The economy contracted by 0.2% in quarter three for 2223 and is expected to flatline during the fourth quarter. This slowdown is forecast to last throughout the first half of the next financial year. Like most economies, amidst the increased cost of living, our government has prioritised clamping down on inflation. In the Autumn Statement presented in November, the Chancellor Jeremy Hunt set out a plan for the short-term increase in public spending as growth slows and unemployment rises. Once growth returns, there is a forecast to be lower increases in public spending. This means that we have seen a better one-year financial settlement than we expected for 2324 from the government. There is also some confidence that this will be maintained for 2425. In particular, the additional money that has been provided for our major costs in adult care is much needed while reforms to health and social care are under development. We have managed our finances incredibly carefully and like many councils, we are projecting to have kept our spending within budget this year despite so much uncertainty on top of costs and demand increases. We have continually reacted and responded to this and managed our major risks. But we must be not under any illusion, our future financial situation is challenging. Our funding has increased less than inflation. We are still awaiting a resolution to ongoing discussions with government on a fairer funding formula for county areas and the shortfall in our highways maintenance funding has yet to be addressed. Although we have welcomed extra temporary support, particularly for care services, there still is a financial iceberg looming, especially as necessary but expensive reforms will come into play in 18 months. In short, we must set our budget going forward that our funding will not increase from 2526 onwards as it has in recent years and cost pressures will also continue. As the Prime Minister said in his New Year's speech, coming out of a recession, reducing inflation and growing our economy will take time and hard work. At the county council, we must plan for long-term success and be prepared to put in the hard work to achieve it. With this final financial backdrop, it would be easy to think we should restrict our ambitions and expectations as to what we can achieve, but this council's executive have committed to make things better for our residents and to protect and enhance vital services in Lincolnshire. Our budget addresses our cost pressures while still investing in our county. It recognises the need to be careful guardians of public finances and to spend every pound wisely. We will be planning efficiencies through better use of technology and simplified systems, saving 11.5 million pounds in the coming year and a further 11.8 millions between 24 and 26. We must continue to ensure this council is financially secure into the future. We have historically been one of the lowest charging county councils in the whole country when it comes to council tax and that will continue to be the case as like the majority of other similar councils, we will need to increase our element of council tax by 4.99%. As always, we'll be using our reserves prudently to help set off our budget shortfall while keeping some money in the bank for more certain future uncertainties. By using seven and a half million pounds from our reserves, we can balance the books whilst protecting frontline services. The increased cost of living is affecting everyone, not least this council, and these are not easy decisions to take. We have been doing a lot to support local residents along with the government interventions and want to continue to do so. So it's important that we keep services at good standard and do not give residents less than they deserve. When times are difficult, it's even more important that people have support to care for their families and keep them safe, that our fire and rescue service can both help prevent emergencies and respond effectively, that our roads are safe and well-maintained, that young people can achieve their best at school, that businesses can help when needed, can access help when needed and that all our residents can lead fulfilling lives. Protecting our most vulnerable children must remain a priority. This year, there will be an estimated 3 million pounds cost pressure for this vital work, managing an increase in demand. Our spending to support families in Lincolnshire gives children a good start in life, but is also an investment for the future. Our Children and Care Transformation Project includes the creation of two new childrens, Ken and East Lindsay, funded jointly by the council and the Department of Education, with both homes due to start open this year. The council also continues to make further progress on its special school capital improvement project. Increased funding has been secured for the £100 million programme, which has already seen the open of brand-new school in Boston and improvements completed at four other Lincolnshire special schools. Works are currently underway at special schools in Lincoln, Louth, Horn Castle, Spalding and Grantham to deliver this ambitious programme, meaning more pupils with sends can attend a local school, benefiting children and their families. Our Public Health Grant continues to support children's health with 10.5 million pounds contribution to the 0-19 Children's Health Service and Family Hubs. There is a 5 million investment in family hubs over the next three financial years, which will help address inequalities, improve education and health and reduce demand in other parts of the system. Unlike many other councils across the country, our Adult Care and Community Wellbeing Directorate will end this financial year with a balanced budget for the 11th year in a row. This is despite a very challenging year with substantial increases from the consequences of Covid, economic turbulence and acute hospital pressures. In fact, as well as performing well financially, the service also managed excellent results for services to residents. Our performance ranked the top quarter of authorities for the provision of direct payment and for rehabilitation services. This winter, we have also used additional government funding to invest in more services to assist our acute hospitals. This has helped people avoid hospital admissions altogether or to be discharged from hospital in a timely and safe fashion. It has made a real difference to what is a significant national pressure. You may have read about the national backlog of assessments and reviews for adult social care, over half a million pounds nationally. I'm pleased to say that in Lincolnshire, there are no backlogs in the care as service and a significant reduction in the backlogs for occupational therapy and social care to the point by next March, these will have been minimised. Our supported housing programme goes from strength to strength with a further three schemes planned in 23 at Welton, Sun, encompassing both housing for older people and people of working age with disabilities. The council continues to provide key public services such as health protection and sexual health services for the people of Lincolnshire with consultants embedded in both adult and children services. Lincolnshire has secured significant national investment for drug and alcohol treatment and recovery, 4 million pounds over two years, which is enabling us to offer support in a wider range of settings and to support more people through treatment into sustainable recovery. We have continued to manage specific government grants for Covid and more recently to support to Ukraine arrivals to ensure appropriate services are available. The team continues to innovate to improve both the quality and cost-effectiveness of services, including the tech-first approach, which is starting to identify equipment such as smart speakers to support people to be as independent as possible and remain connected to family and friends. We know that our residents are concerned about the condition of our roads as we are. In our recent survey, it was identified as the main priority area for residents. To manage the reduced funding we now get from the Department of Transport, in addition to permanently replacing the 12 million which was lost from the government, we have now added an extra seven, we are proposing to act an extra 7 million for highways maintenance this year, bringing the highways budget for 2324 to around 93 million pounds. This will be much needed in improving safety, especially on our unclassified roads and reduce the backlog on traffic regulation orders, which I know is causing frustration for all councillors and communities. The Department of Transport's static budget continues to cause pressure without any adjustments to allow for inflation. There are significant amounts of cost pressures in our highways budget from increasing costs of energy and materials. This year, we are accounting in the budget for 5.5 million pounds in contract inflation and 3.8 million pounds for street lighting costs. We have allocated our highways funding to ensure we can continue to meet our national requirements whilst making improvements wherever possible. This is included, looking at our spending on school transport during a time where we are seeing more passengers and significantly higher contract prices. We are in the second year of our three-year transformation programme for educational travel with savings of 3.3 million pounds being made against a target of 1.2 last year. Further savings for next year are planned at 2.6 million pounds, but there is a much larger projected overspend requiring a boost to contingency. Another challenging area for the council is dealing with waste with new government requirements including the separate collection and disposal of food waste from March 25. In the long term, this initiative will be beneficial to the environment and should be cost-effective. It follows on from the separate collection and disposal of paper and card, which we continue to roll out across the county benefiting taxpayers. However, it will need changes to infrastructure, contracts and service delivery and we currently don't believe there will be any additional funding from government to implement these changes needed. The council has received 7.18 million pounds worth of government funding to help us better understand the groundwater flood risk in Lincolnshire. The extra funding has been awarded from DEFRA as part of the 200 million pounds flood and coastal innovation programme. We have made significant investments in our fire and rescue services in recent years so that some of our firefighters are amongst the best protected and equipped in the country as we've heard just recently. The service will face cost pressures for this year from the increased cost of fuel to support operational vehicles. This is combined with a 20% decrease of home office grant funding year on year for the next five years for operational communication system. The latest fire employee's increased payoff would cost an additional 2 million pounds alone. Better care funding to support our co responding activities is due to end in April, but there are advanced discussions through the Urgent Care and Emergency Partnership to try and address the funding shortfall. The council will be making a capital purchase of the Waddington Training Centre, supporting Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue to make savings on the current rental costs. This will also give long-term stability for the training and development of fire and rescue and also open opportunities for income generation to divert the site as in terms, as we heard also earlier. Other investment has been at Grantham Fire Station to refurbish and modernise the facilities and also to create a sustainable training area to enable crews to fulfil their obligation of core training on a daily basis. Ongoing work on changing some roles across the service and working more efficiently will bring some savings. The service is also looking at the future model for fire control in the coming years and is exploring local collaborative options. Our wider community safety teamwork with partners across the county to ensure that people are safe in their own homes. We are strongly committed to securing funding and improving the support available to those suffering from domestic abuse across the county. This year with the Police and Crime Commissioner and the ICB, we have committed 1.7 million pounds for a range of improved services which will go live in April. This includes a digital-based support officer, office, offer, sorry, a support hub with a helpline, triage and assessment service, an outreach team, community inventions for adults and children and recovery support. We know that our Core Heritage Sites continue to be popular and libraries are important community assets. Finding additional funding for these services enables them to remain vibrant spaces. The new financial year will be the first of three years of arts council funding for cultural activity totaling 218,000 pounds every year. We've also been successful in renewing the 70,000 pounds of external funding for our aviation heritage schools learning programme for the next year. Two new business bubbles in Lincoln and Spalding libraries will also open in the next year, funded through a further £211,000 of external grants from the Library Improvement Fund. Our investment in previous years in developments and infrastructure to support growth are reaping rewards. We've attracted new private investors to our county, including at the south, Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone near Hull Beach, the Foxby Lane Business Park in Gainsborough and Skegness Business Park. We've also led a regional bid which has brought a third of a million pounds to Lincolnshire to deliver more than 100 new EV chargers in a pilot involving five communities in Lincolnshire. Going forward, ensuring our businesses are supported with the training and workforce they need is vital. We have successfully scored £4 million over the next three years to deliver the National Multiply Adult Numeracy Programme and will be working with 18 local providers, including colleges, independent training providers, community organisations and employers, to do this in innovative ways. Our business, Lincolnshire Growth Hub, has been tremendously successful in supporting businesses in the county, offering one-to-one general and specialist supports, grants, events and training. The majority of the grants for this will cease in June 23, so we will look to work with our local authority partners to secure money from the UK Shared Prosperity funding so that this service can still be offered on a county-wide basis. Although it's already hard work maintaining our services with the financial challenges that are presented, it's vital behind the scenes we continue to make sure the council is well run and efficient as possible. We also, we already have a challenging programme to automate and simplify process so we can save money whilst protecting service delivery. We will continue to enhance our digital offer so residents can make payments and contact us online, which can be more convenient for them and reduce our operating costs. We are managing our estate so that property we no longer require can be sold and money reinvested for our residents. And of course, we will pursue our ambitions for devolution for Greater Lincolnshire. The government has made clear that devolution is their mechanism to give more powers and funding to local areas. This will be how we secure the best use of public money for residents and businesses in Greater Lincolnshire going into the future. This includes directly through additional funding but also unlocking the potential of our whole area. There are indications following the rollout of devolution deals elsewhere in the country, the government will be looking to extend the programme further and working with partners, we will do all we can to make that a reality here. I'm pleased to present a balanced budget once again and also report that we continue to spend within budget every year. This is in contrast with many other councils in the country who increasingly have to pop up, prop up their budgets and some others who have driven recklessly over the financial cliff. Our council has one of the lowest council tax rates in the country and receives one of the worst allocations of government grants, with the challenge of high deprivation in certain areas and a low density population. To be able to maintain that status and continue to provide good services while having an ambitious future agenda is something we can all be rightly proud of. On that note, I recommend this budget for your council, for your support and also move the recommendations as outlined in the order proceedings. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So we'll move on, although your offices are distributing copies to you. Yes, councillor Hill, you have then formally moved the budget in your speech. Is there a second, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm happy to second the budget, you serve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, moving on then, councillor Dilks, would you like to move your amendment, please?
I'd be delighted to, Madam Chairman. And can I first of all thank councillor Hill for the way he has presented what we might call, well, the budget statement, but what we might call the State of Union address. And can I thank you for the lovely booklet, very nice, yeah. We won't go into how much it costs. Thank you, thank you for that. May I also pay tribute, while I'm on my feet, to our Lincolnshire firefighters and Colleen the Fire Dog, who have helped save lives in the devastating Turkish earthquake, and I thank councillor Corey for her update earlier. Thank you. And Madam Chairman, as we set the county council budget today for the coming financial year, as councillor Hill alluded to, I'm sure we can all agree that there's never been such a challenging financial climate as the one that we face today. As we stood here to set the current budget a year ago, who could have predicted or even believed that we'd see such a brutal murderous war in Europe like we haven't seen since the Second World War? With rocketing energy costs impacting on our residents, businesses and yes, on our councils as well, as oil giants pocket obscene profits on the back of Putin's outrageous Then there's the post-pandemic challenges, of course. Excuse me. It never works when you want it to, does it? Do apologise. I needed to have printed it out. Then there's the post-pandemic challenges, of course, and the post-Brexit challenges. And we've all seen the recent surveys now telling us that the majority in every constituency in the country, except Boston with Skeggi and my own in South Holland, now believe that Brexit was a bad idea after all. And I'm sure you'll forgive me, as councillor Hill actually mentioned it as well, for mentioning that we had a new Prime Minister in the year, the clear choice of Conservative Party members, who then went on to crash the economy in record time, leading to higher inflation and those we represent facing higher mortgages at a time of the worst cost of living crisis in living memory. I'm tempted to say whoever thought Liz Truss was a good idea. And now we have the third Prime Minister in the year, in which not even you guys got a vote, and we certainly didn't. So much for the background. May I say thank you to those, including councillor Hill and the whole team, who have worked on preparing this budget, I'm looking at Andrew Crookham and his team, who've had to deal with particular difficulties this year as it was the latest, I believe it was the latest ever announcement by the government as to what its provisional settlement to local authorities was, and actually came just a few days before what for most of us was the Christmas break. I actually welcome many of the measures in the proposals outlined by councillor Hill. The scrutiny panel, which I'm privileged to chair, has been examining, or one of the panels that I'm privileged to chair, has been examining how the county council might help our diverse and many town centres to thrive post-pandemic. And one way is to tackle the current two-year backlog it takes to get a traffic regulation order, which has been a personal frustration to me in my own division, and I know to many of you as well, in trying to achieve often small but significant improvements and changes to our environment that can make a real difference and improve the communities we all represent. So it would be remiss of me not to welcome the extra resource proposed to tackle the TRO backlog. I would like to ask however, and I will be if I don't get an answer today, how long do we expect that backlog, it will take to tackle that backlog to get it down to an acceptable level? And I accept, of course, that getting a TRO is a far from simple process that has to be followed, but what is an acceptable level of time it should take to get a TRO in place? I also note the cost pressures on getting children from their home to school and back again. It's now costing over £40 million a year, frightening. It's always likely to be higher, of course, in a rural county such as ours, but I believe it is worth noting that the way we do secondary education in Lincolnshire, with a third of the county designated selective, also adds significantly to the cost pressures of home-school transport. It is clearly more costly to the public purse to have buses crisscrossing the county, often taking children miles past their local secondary school. As some of you know, I previously spent years campaigning what I believe was the long outdated policy of this council then, the Stamford endowed schools policy, to pay public school fees for a few selected children in Stamford. And whilst children in my own area and others across the county were denied access, no matter how educationally talented they might have been. I do, I recall councillor Hill saying some years ago in this chamber that I'd almost single-handedly destroyed a Conservative flagship education policy, and I have to say I wear the badge with pride. I can see some worried looks opposite, so I'd better just add that despite personally failing my own 11 plus and being rejected, as most kids are in the system rather than selected, I'm not about to launch a campaign against the system that we have now, which separates goats from sheep, it's just, I make the point. So budgets are, of course, about choices, how we choose to spend the money on behalf of those we collect it from. And each time we raise the council tax, we reassure those we are elected to represent that we have to do it to deliver the services they rightly expect us to provide. But we also, of course, squirrel away millions in case of a rainy day, and we constantly remind ourselves that we can only spend reserves once, which is of course true. We currently have £15 million, so I think it's £16 million, in what we call general reserves. We have some £40 more millions in what we call the volatility reserve, and there are tens of millions more in numerous other pots called earmarked reserves. There's also a fund, as we've heard today in councillor Hill's speech, there's a fund of more than £8 million, which I'd best describe it as leftovers or underspends from various projects. That money has now been identified by our finance director as no longer needed for that specific purpose. I wouldn't call it spare money, but it sounds almost like that. Under the proposals outlined by councillor Hill today, this eight-point-whatever-million is to be placed in what we call the Development Fund. The amendment I'm proposing is to instead use a relatively small portion of that eight million plus, this leftover money, less than one-eighth of that eight million, to ensure that the team of police community support officers which serves our county is not slashed by half due to budgetary pressures that the Lincolnshire police are now facing. I really do ask, I think there's something that we can do today to help our police. We have a wider responsibility. I appreciate it would be a discretionary grant, it would be a one-off only grant, it would allow the government to bring in what it says it's going to be bringing in, fairer funding and perhaps hopefully interim extra funding for those police areas worse affected, such as ours. As councillor Hill says, we're the lowest funded police area in the country. I ask for your support, Madam Chairman, thank you. I would like to ask Madam Chairman, just on a point of information, will I be allowed to speak in the, on the Labour amendment separately?
I will consult.
Will I? Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Right, do I have a second?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. It's Marianne Overton, so I didn't hear the name, thank you for that. I'd like to second this motion because I think this is actually a really important service that is currently provided by our PCSOs, our Police Community Support Officers. I was part of the discussions early on when this council previously supported the PCSOs. We put in, if I remember rightly, around £3 million to get an extra 59 Police Community Support Officers. And we did that because we believe they provide a really valuable service. They are neighbourhood-based, which means that they don't get called off when there's an emergency in Lincoln or Nottingham or anywhere else. It means they understand the community, they know who likely causes problems at times, they know which jitties those people will be running down. When the police do come to do some help, if there are no eyes and ears on the ground and the police are called in because an incident comes and they arrive cold, it's going to be a lot harder to do that policing. So the PCSOs provide a groundwork, they provide a preventative approach. In my area, and I have had personal experience in the past of abuse from a youngster consistently in the street, and what do you do about that? I spoke to the PCSO and they did actually deal with it. They waited at the bus and went home with that child and spoke to the parent and the incident stopped. That was a PCSO. That's the kind of thing that they can do. They can prevent issues from arising. They work in the schools, they work with youngsters to try and keep them on the straight and narrow, they help them avoid the problems that they might see, and they help them despite the significant pressures that there can be on a young person. It's the PCSOs that can help them keep on the straight and narrow. So I think that without the PCSOs, I think the police job will be a lot harder, and even if we do get more police, which I hope we do, they will not be a replacement for this on-the-ground, preventative, on-the-beat approach that we see from our excellent PCSOs. So I think this is a golden opportunity for us to really help and to provide a starter to create a fund which will create, encourage partners to come forward, and we can work on that so that by next year, we've actually got partners engaged so we can really make a significant difference and confirm it long term. So I second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Overton. Councillor Lee, would you like to move your amendment now, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank councillor Hill for his presentation and the team also that helped prepare the budget. I'd like to endorse the comments around the firefighters. And I'd like to say as well, I'm sure we all saw in the news recently, the news about the death of a firefighter in Scotland, and I think councillor Hill made mention of the pay rise for firefighters. Well, I would say that they're worth every single last penny of that pay rise. And thirdly, I'd like to endorse the comments by councillor Dilks, and I completely support his comments around the PCSOs, we're with him on that. I'm here this morning, though, to talk about Citizens Advice Lincolnshire. CAL came to Public Protection Scrutiny Committee at the end of May last year, and they gave us a presentation, they went into a lot of detail about the support they provide, support around housing, debt, benefits, employment, just to name some of the things that they do. They generally support people who are struggling with poverty. Citizens Advice saw a rise, they said, of 269% in demand for their services in the six months just prior to that, between September 2021 and March 22. and March twenty-two. And they'd only been able to answer thirty-six per cent, that's about a third, of the calls to their advice line, and that's the primary route of access for most of the support that they provide. They said, excuse me, to answer even eighty per cent of the need, they would need another fifteen full-time employees, and that doesn't even fully address the problem, remember, that still leaves twenty per cent of people not getting an answer. So at that time, I called for Lincolnshire County Council to increase our funding to Citizens Advice, but I was told to go away and come back at budget time, so here I am. I'd remind colleagues of the value of the funding that we give to Citizens Advice. We were told that for every pound invested, they generate savings, savings of over four pounds to government and public services, over thirty-one pounds in wider social and economic benefits, and over nineteen pounds in value to the individuals they help. And I don't know about you, but I think that that's money well-spent. And we're a year down the line now from then, from almost from that presentation, and we've seen record inflation in that year, inflation that still stands at over ten per cent. And in both rural, because I'm mindful that we're a very widespread county, in rural and urban areas, people face massive price increases in the cost of food, household energy, household energy, sorry, housing costs and petrol. That's if they can afford to use these roads that we want to invest in, of course. And yes, I know that we're only one of the organisations who work with Citizens Advice, and they work with people like district councils and food banks and other organisations. But, you know, I'm a county councillor, and this is a county council meeting, so I'm asking us if we will increase what we give them, and our group have identified a funding source that could be used to do that. And I also know, from the last Public Protection Scrutiny Committee, they've looked at ways of working differently, and we're going to get a report back on that. But, you know, you can only make fifty p stretched to a pound for so long, and when the money has been proven over a year ago to not be anywhere near enough after another year of galloping inflation, I really can't imagine that anything very different is going to make that much of a difference and mean that those people that couldn't access that service will be able to get to it. The support that Citizens Advice provide is needed now, not just for the sixty-four per cent who couldn't access it last year, but actually for the most recent casualties of our struggling economy, growing number of casualties as well. And I genuinely hope that colleagues in the chamber will listen to what I've said today. I'm not trying to make a political point, I'm trying to make a point that we need to support people who are struggling, because poverty and hardship is hitting people right across Lincolnshire, not just in my patch, everywhere. And I urge you to support our amendment and clearly demonstrate that you're all on the side of those in our county, right across our county, who need your support. And I'm going to add one aim to those that councillor Hill mentioned earlier on in his speech, we should aim to protect and support those people right across our county who suffer the blight and misery of poverty and the problems that that poverty brings. We were told by government that they'd be levelling up. Well, I think that increasing funding to Citizens Advice would be a local example of where we could start to help with doing exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lee, do I have a second, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Citizens Advice Lincolnshire has become part of everyday role for residents in Lincolnshire. These residents go for advice as their first step. Councillor Lee stated how one pound invested saves four pounds to public services. The service helps people in employment, it also helps people back into employment, prevents people and gives people advice about house evictions, about mortgages, reducing demand for mental health and G P services, it improves family relationships. Cutting funds is counterproductive. In fact, the opposite should be taking place. The question is, what is going to be the alternative? Thank you.
Thank you. Right, before we start the main debate, which will be obviously open to all members, we will take a short five-minute recess and then be back for the debate in, well, at twenty-two, by that clock. Thank you.
Right, councillor Wally, that's the first one. There's like one that we've seen so far. Can we try to start this?
Thank you Chair. And thank you to councillor Lee, regarding the C A B, the assistance of the last election. I can't believe they're going through there on the other side of this. And I don't think we need to report things into this at all. They have been, they're trusted by our residents, they're trusted by the organisations that they work with, and they are an integral organisation for the county council. I think the thing that I'd like to say is that they don't stand alone. There are other organisations that they work with within that county, who are supporting residents who actually need help and who need their expert guidance. Now, as you know, there is a group now which has taken place since the last election, which has spoken. It started in August, it ended in October. The whole idea behind that is to make sure that to come twenty four, twenty five, the appropriate amount of funding goes into place. And the reason I say that I want to emphasise this around the, what's taking the review of the vote, is that there are one or two unknowns that are, it's different now to when it was perhaps when we had the original conversation. A couple of those things are, one is that at the time, I believe we defined that as forced, the workforce to assist advice organisations, and the change of health, and two of the three actually to national telephone boards, as well as the leadership. So, as a lot of people were saying, I don't mean school because some of them are completely, but they're not the school. And the other point is that the government has given quite a lot of money through the support, and as you'll see on our custom living webpage, both the councils and the district councils, and so on, but again, I think of some of these, I don't know if it was all district councils, but a couple of them chose to put on their house support fund, advice and money through citizens' advice. But that, in both cases, that only came into operation last October. So we haven't got a complete set of figures. So what I'd say to you is, I agree, it's a great organisation, but can we just wait until October, when we've got bigger than we can work, and a little bit more in the future, and then we will take a decision. Thank you.
Councillor Wally. Thank you. I agree that it's important for councillors to keep money in reserves, possibly raise any day funding, funding from emergency, unexpected expenditure pressures. However, it is also important to take care of our residents by ensuring that they are safe, well-upraised, potential harming of P C S O users when there is being reduced the number of them, and increasing things, adding to the problems about social behaviour and minor crime. It also reduces the amount of advice given to the public safety. This might not seem as a good idea. In the current political climate, we're all firmly fighting financial violence. The incidence of burden varies according to various lots, falling greatly into the volume. As pressure's built up, we need to pick on financial, social problems, provided by organisations like the citizens' advice. The two amendments are case one point five million, the eight point six hundred million being transferred to reserve to be make sense. Therefore, I must be supportive of the amendments.
Do you want to add any further? Councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Dylks.
Thank you Madam Chair. I do support the amendment brought by councillor Lee to increase funding to the C A B. I welcome the comments that councillor Wally has made in the course of party recognition of the values of citizens' advice bureaus. They are really valued, and they're definitely valued in the community. And they provide, in my opinion, they provide a fourth eye league face-to-face, which is funded, which is greatly valued, and is actually funded by a little charity, United Charities in Beacons and James. I really welcome that. But whilst welcoming the review that you mentioned, councillor, what you mentioned, I think I would really say to councillor Lee, having said to her last year, come back for the budget, is now, well, come back for next year's budget, or year, or whenever they are. So there is going to be a benefit this year, and they are facing a crisis, as we know organisations, charities, and everybody are right now. Crisis is right now. So I hope they step here next year to be able to be, um, help. I've, um, never noticed this going on, but I spoke to Simon Richards, this chief officer of the Citizens' Advice South Lincolnshire, and he confirms they are facing a financial crisis right now. And I would like to just read a little bit of what he's emailed me back. He said it's not unique, they're all facing similar financial pressures. And this, the previous year, he says, has been seen unprecedented pressure on communities and health services. We know that. People come to us, the C A B, when they don't know where else to turn, and we help them to find a way forward. We change lives, he says. We've seen a year-on-year increase in people's health in South Holland of seventeen percent, whilst managing on reduced resources and facing significant increases in costs. Telephone demand has increased by forty-five percent year-on-year to thirteen thousand two hundred and four across South Lincolnshire alone in two thousand and two. Whilst, they were unable to answer more calls than in the previous year, as councillor Lee says, in Lincoln and other places, they are still only able to deal with about the third of the total calls coming in. And that's really worrying. At the start of the year, they had, they were still dealing with calls from Covid and the impact on services, but admittedly, the cost of living pressures, as we expect. In short time, so I'm just, as we're saying, they are adapting, they've had to adapt, they have used some of their charity reserves, and they've had to, because helps Covid, they've only got half the telephone people, the telephone volunteers answering the phone by now. So they haven't been able to get those people back, those calls. So that's part of the crisis they're facing. I've run out of time, so I would just say, I believe C A B provides wonderful service to those who need it. And I, it's never been needed more than right now, on next year, right now. And I would urge you to, you have today, on the small level, thank you.
Okay, councillor Dylks. Right, my next stop, councillor, I think it is councillor Robb, who wants to speak.
Yes, Chair, and I just wanted to pick up on the P C S Os. Obviously, there's a number of us in the room today who are on the police crime panel, and actually, our last meeting, I think, we did discuss this, the chief constable did come, he did advise us about how there's no flexibility in the way that he goes for the police officers, he cannot dangle that into spending it on P C S Os.
Tie him down to using that, which is quite right, because our, our police officer numbers were very low. We're nearly to where we need to be now. So on that, I think, obviously, the chief and the P C C are saying they have no funding. I do believe, though, that actually we did use to fund P C S Os before, a number of years ago, but we stepped back. And I do believe that actually, it is a police responsibility. And actually, I know they haven't, you know, they're saying they haven't got the funds and that, but I do feel others are now stepping in and then having to step out again. I do feel that we have our own issues. You know, we've talked, Martin, councillor Hill has talked about how well the council has done, especially with adult care, because we know after Covid, people going into hospital, trying to get them out, they're really doing an excellent job. Many adult care services across the country, you know, aren't doing as well. So I think we are doing very well, but we don't know ourselves whether we're going to have to input further funding into any of our budgets over the next few years. So I just wanted to say, I know how P C S Os are valued by a community, where I represent, a very rural area. And actually, I've had a number of emails with concerned residents saying, you know, they will feel if our P C S Os in my Woodall Spa rugby area are withdrawn. So I know it is a worry for local people, because they are the face of the police in local areas. But I do think that we, you know, I don't know whether we could, you know, speak to the P C C or chief constable as councillors, but I do think we, we shouldn't step in again, because we stepped in and stepped out before. I just think it is a budget problem for the police. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. My next person, I think, is councillor Lee.
Thank you Chair. First of all, thanks to councillor Wally for coming back to me. That was a full response. I just wanted to echo the comments by councillor Dylks, I raised this a year ago, I think you said that the review finished in October. Can I have some clarification, if that means that if there were potentially to be an increase in funding, that wouldn't happen till this time next year, which is almost two years down the road from when I first raised this. And with regard to the P C S Os, I sit on the Public Protection Committee, and this came up at that committee. From memory, I believe that a committee actually sent, were going to send some sort of response to the Police and Crime Commissioner, to say that we weren't happy with the fact that the P C S Os were being cut. And that was the whole of committee, that wasn't just one side or the other. So I think there's widespread worry about this. Thank you.
Just very briefly, if you don't mind, just briefly to answer councillor Lee's question. Obviously, as councillor Wally said, there is a review ongoing, which will end later this year. And as I've said, there are, if there is a perceived need for additional funding at that time, we have the, we have the mechanisms to allocate funding to it via the executive, which is the, which will then go to the overview and scrutiny committee.
Thank you councillor Hill. Right, of course, this is not a, I'm just reminding people, my members, a question and answer session, this is, of course, a debate, but I bow to that one. Councillor Richard Wright, I believe you're the next wishing to speak.
Thank you Chair. I mean, yes, it's on the issue of C A B, which I wholeheartedly support. And I think every member in the room recognises the importance and contribution from C A B. But at the moment, we're being asked to sign a blank cheque, we're being asked to give money. And of course, the words crisis have been thrown around, and the valued work they do. But there's no indication of where that money would be spent. And all I can say is, I think that we should be waiting for the review. Because only eight days ago at Northcote Stephen, we agreed to continue the funding that we offer to C A B. But more importantly, within that agreement was also a review, because it's been recognised that costs could be cut. That actually, the costs that are incurred by C A B aren't necessarily the true cost they need to incur. And for instance, we're now looking at a review on the possibility of housing the team within NK's building, which will cut their running costs down. So does this council really want to just sign a blank cheque, thinking that the money will go into delivering better services for residents, when in fact it's going to be spent on fuel bills for officers that they can't afford to really heat, so that it can make sure the staff are warm whilst they're conducting their duties. So I would rather wait to see a review put in place, to see if this, also what's, what's being suggested in Northcote Stephen can't be replicated across the county in various other local authorities or other public-bodied buildings, so that we can see them reduce their costs before we really have a look at what they actually need, potentially, with any kind of increase or suggested increase in funding going forward. Because as we all know, cutting costs achieves far more than just, just paying, just paying a direct payment for one year. So let's do the review and see what the true costs are, rather than signing a blank cheque.
Thank you councillor Wright. Councillor Ashley Baxter.
Thank you Chair. In general, talking about the public, the budget, I welcome the frankness and candour of councillor Hill's speech, underlining the troubles that have been caused by twelve years of conservative government. Twelve years of increasingly chaotic conservative government. First of all, we had George Osborne and David Cameron bringing us the original austerity. And remember that after the Second World War, this country had less money and less resources than, than at any point in its history. And at that point, we built more council houses, and we did far more to reach, and that was the point at which we started the N H S. Austerity, history shows, doesn't need to be everybody cutting back on absolutely everything. After that, I accept that Covid and Putin, and possibly five-year, the five-year agonies of getting Brexit done have not helped. But Johnson, Truss and Sunak have brought us austerity two point zero, three point zero, and possibly four point zero, causing all of our public sector crises. The public sector and virtually every public service, fire, police, N H S, postal service, which used to be a public service, with pay crises and fuel crises and so on. So, well, well done Lincolnshire County Council on eleven years of balanced budget. But don't forget the prices we've paid over those eleven years. We've got reduced youth services, we've got reduced library services, the list goes on. And even after all, even after all that, councillor Hill, it's forecasting a financial iceberg looming. There is no one else to blame than either the Conservatives in Lincoln, or more likely, the Conservatives in London. So I was going to say something about Citizens Advice Bureau, but I welcome the comments from councillor Wally and councillor Hill, which appear to be saying there's a chance of jam tomorrow. So I look forward to breakfast. And on the police, the police and P C S Os, as far more people in the nation now realise, I think, that, that the role that P C S Os have in terms of dealing not just with antisocial behaviour, but crime more generally, thanks to programmes like Happy Valley, which have shown that the P C S Os are an integral, essential part of our policing services. And we need to value them as well as proper police officers. There's a crime being committed in Lincolnshire, Madam Chairman, there's a crime being committed in Lincolnshire, someone's being robbed. And I would say that Peter's being robbed in order to pay Paul. And that's by order of the Home Office. The Lincolnshire Police have a choice of either putting more, taking money from P C S Os and putting it into police, or not. And leaving, as councillor Bradwell has said, leaving it to the police to sort out, is the kind of silo, it's not the police's problem, it's Lincolnshire residents' problem. And it's the kind of side-
Councillor Baxter, could you please now-
I'll draw to a close.
Finish.
I'll draw to a close.
I think you've probably closed, I think.
So, Lea-
And could you sit down, please, thank you. We have to have a time limit, or we shall be here all afternoon. Councillor Skinner, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I won't bore people with how the Treasury was when we took over. I think a note actually covered that situation. But let's, let's cover some more important things. Councillor Wright, Citizens Advice, in Boston, we have supported the Citizens Advice with a facility at Boston, free of charge for the last six years. That, in fact, even when the Princess Royal came, she came back to have a chat, because she couldn't think of anywhere where it was done like that. And I welcome councillor Wright's way of doing it. That's absolutely great. Policing, nobody's doubting P C S Os, they do an incredible amount of work. But at the end of the day, people have to have balanced budgets. And I don't support taking, well, robbing Peter to pay Paul, it's not coming to this, Paul, I'll make that point now. But from, from the point of view that we need to support our communities, the P C, the Police and Crime Commissioner is supportive. Bottom line is, this county gets a very raw deal, very raw deal with funding. In fact, Lincolnshire Police are literally on the bottom with funding. So I think the only way this council could help is probably write a letter to the Home Office or the Prime Minister to up the fairer funding bit. But I do believe we've done that before. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Skinner. Are there any more councillors wishing to speak? As if so, could you raise your hand? Councillor Cleaver.
Thank you Madam Chairman. I do support both these amendments. My residents in Stamford perceive that the existing P C S O resource is inadequate. The resource that we have is trusted, is well-respected. But it is- But it is perceived to be inadequate, particularly at hotspots where antisocial behaviour takes place, particularly on late summer evenings in public places. And the reduction would have an effect, and it would have an effect on the policing of antisocial behaviour, which then obviously is a problem for our district councils in carrying out their responsibilities to prevent antisocial behaviour. So there is actually a fallback on us at SKDC in terms of how that problem has to be dealt with and will be dealt with indeed this summer particularly. So I support this amendment. We do need to keep the number of PCSOs in post if we can. I'm sorry that we have to do this as a county council. I'm sorry that we should be put in a position where we are debating giving money to the police to support this service. I wish I was here promoting amendments to spend money on things that were more positive and going to give more joy to people in the county. It's a sad reflection that we're here having to try and help the police not have to make a reduction of 40 PCSOs across the county. Similarly, for Stamford, we don't have a CAB office anymore. Again, it's a very respected organisation. It helps a lot of people. And it is missed. So anything we can do to help CAB, hopefully to restore the level of service that we used to enjoy in the town. I'd say there was an office, it was closed. And it would be nice to think that that service again can be restored to the level that it was previously. So I will support both amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dyer, you're next.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And I agree with the comments from my colleagues on this side of the chamber in respect to the two amendments. And I think it just goes to show that the amendments put forward today by the opposition are amendments where this council doesn't actually statutory have to provide those services. So the only alternatives that you could provide are issues that aren't directly the responsibility of Lincolnshire County Council. So colleagues, I think that shows that actually Lincolnshire County Council is delivering good services, so much so that the opposition couldn't even put forward one amendment that was actually relevant to services that LCC directly have ownership over. So that's a well-run Conservative council. And despite difficult financial circumstances, we're still investing in our highways, and that's above inflation. We're investing above inflation in our highways. And I've seen that in Waddington in the last year with over a million pounds spent on road schemes in Waddington, Brant Road, Station Road, Hollywell Road. And that's whilst continuing to deliver key services in adult social care and children's services. Not one mention of those services by the opposition today. And Chairman, it is a difficult decision to increase council tax just short of 5%. That's a lot of money, and it's a difficult decision. It's still below inflation. And actually, I consulted my parish councils, Waddington Parish Council and North Highcombe Town Council, on our proposals to increase council tax. And even Waddington Parish Council, where colleagues may know Mike Gallagher sits as a councillor, even Waddington Parish Council agreed that LCC should increase its preset by 5% because of the difficult circumstances. So I was quite blown away by that, actually. I was expecting Mike to want us not to increase council tax at all. So despite difficult circumstances, LCC is being run by an effective Conservative team. And so much so, the opposition couldn't even put one amendment forward that was relevant to our services. So well done, Martin, and well done, Team Conservative.
Right, the councillors, this is your last chance, I think, if you wish to speak before we move to the summing up. Councillor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Just exercising my right to speak, as I observed earlier. I just want to thank councillor Dyer for his very perceptive comments, obviously. I think it's indicative of the fact that we have been providing good value services over many, many years, 11 years of balanced budgets. And you actually see in the speech that the leader presented that we are actually looking at developing and enhancing services. But also crucially, we are looking at improving the processes behind the delivery of those services. Because at the end of the day, everybody starts, you know, the political messaging from the opposition is cuts, cuts, cuts. Well, actually, it's about improving processes, it's about improving procedures, it's about doing things more effectively and efficiently with the public money. And as the leader is in his speech, next year, we can find £11.5 million worth of these efficiency savings. It'll be £11.8 million to come in previous years. And that's because this council, this Conservative council, this Conservative administration runs the finances of Lincolnshire County Council in an efficient and effective manner. So much so that, and I take the point about reserves, it was raised earlier that we have reserves and we have £16 million in our general reserve. Well, that is the reserve of last resort. And the reality is that that is about, around about 10 days of this council expenditure. In those terms, it's a very, very, very small buffer to actually have. I think as the leader mentioned in his speech, we are still facing quite a number of cost pressures going forward with inflation. There's still no clarity around the fairer funding. So there's still quite a lot of financial challenge and financial risk that we're going to face going forward in the next couple of years. But despite that, we've actually done a review of some of our earmarked reserves. As a result, we've been able to find £8.7 million to go into this development fund. Now, this development fund is not just going to sit there on the balance sheet and do nothing. It will be used to fund local LCC priorities. That's the whole basis, the whole fundamental basis of why it's there. It's to fund LCC priorities and any cost pressures that LCC face. Now, some excellent comments have been made about both PCSOs and the CAB service by councillors on both sides. And these are obviously very, very, very valuable services. I think I especially welcome the comments that both councillor Woolley and councillor Wright and councillor Skinner made in relation to the CAB. And I do think it's probably, it is advisable to wait until the review is actually completed in October this year before we then start looking potentially at what help might be available. And similarly with the PCSOs, nobody would doubt the value the PCSOs do. I mean, in my particular, I have six minutes, councillor Baxter, as a segment of the motion, which, if you refer to the Constitution, I'm sure you will see. Now, where was I? Oh, yes, I was talking, I was talking about PCSOs. In my particular division, I know that we only have one full-time police officer and one PCSO. And I know that they have to cover an awful lot of villages. And also as part of that, their area does cover the deals field state in Grantham as well. So it's quite a substantial part of the west of Grantham as well as the villages. But ultimately, the development reserve is there for LCC priorities. You know, we are facing some very, very real cost pressures going forward, and there is still a lot of financial risk. There's merit in the independent motion, but it would only be for one year. It wouldn't solve the problem. It would merely, it would just be a short-term fix. Ultimately, the police have to go to government and make their case for future, for more funding. We have learned that Lincolnshire is the lowest-funded police authority in the country. We have to put, it's down to the chief constable, it's down to the Police and Crime Commissioner to put pressure on the Home Office to increase funding. I mean, we as individual councils and as councillors, we can be part of that lobbying process as well. But anything we do is only going to be a short-term fix. We need a long-term fix, a long-term solution. And that comes from increasing police funding. So I think we are part of the solution, but the solution is driving the political case for more police funding for Lincolnshire. Although on that basis, I can't unfortunately support or recommend that we support, on this side of the chamber, that we can support either of these amendments despite the fact that they both have considerable merit with them. And finally, I think, just going back to the point that councillor Dyer was talking about, the reason why we are in this position, we've been able to present a balanced budget, 311 here on the trot, we have plenty of money in reserves, unlike a lot of councils that have been slashing money around like it's been going out of fashion. And over the years that I've sat on this council, every year we've had various budget amendments come forward from various opposition groups. If we'd actually followed all of those, we would be in the exact position where a lot of other councils are now, issuing section 114 notices, the fact that the going broke. This Conservative administration has delivered sound financial management for the past 11 years. We're delivering another sound balanced budget, and I commend it to the support of the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. Right. Right, councillor Hill, then, would you like to respond?
I'll just wind up. Can I first of all thank members for their contribution and opposition members in particular for raising two very valid and topical subjects, which I think is a good thing we should debate. I mean, if I can turn to the issue about CAB funding, and I think as councillor Woolley has said, that is subject to review. And I think we should also remember that we currently fund the CAB in Lincolnshire to the tune of £278,000 every year as a base budget. But there is a review ongoing. And I think there were some valid points made about we should wait until that review actually comes to its conclusion, and then obviously we can, then we'll see where we are. I think it's not, hopefully, not just going to be an issue about justifying extra funding. And I think has been said by councillors Wright and Skinner and others. It should be about the whole process because it should include, frankly, open book accounting. So because CABs all get lots and pots of money from various different sources. And it's not just about accepting cost increase. And councils, you know, we have had to save tremendous amounts of money and become more efficient. And before extra money is made available, we need to be sure that the voluntary sector in general is actually taking those same steps as well. So be clear that it will be looked at, but it's not a guarantee that extra money will be forthcoming. And like everything else, we have as councillors to make decisions and we make choices between what to fund and not fund. So we'll see what the review says and see what the demand is. And as councillor Woolley has said, see how much of that is temporary or how much of that will be gone down and how efficiencies can be found. So we'll see where we go with that. In terms of councillor Dilks's amendment, as has just been said by councillor Whittington, it is only for one year. And my understanding from the police funding situation, their funding will remain depressed, indeed might be going down, but certainly will depress for foreseeable future. So it's not a question if we fund PCSOs for one year that suddenly there's going to be lots more money and it will carry on. So I don't think it is, as has been said previously, a good idea for this council just to delay the inevitable because we might as well expect the police to do, make the decisions which are their decisions in that case. And I think just for information, and we are going to talk about the police again in the motion, before the government brought in its new reforms, there were 1,020 police officers in Lincolnshire. Following the extra money which they will get for police officers, there will shortly be 1,186 police officers in Lincolnshire. So that's a substantial increase. And even if you take away the 41 PCSOs which will be lost, there are still going to be more than 125 uniformed officers in Lincolnshire to deliver services. So again, we're not talking about, so effectively what has happened is PCSOs will be turned into police constables. And I think we'll have a debate about that later on. So again, I don't think at this stage where we are having to find £11 million worth of savings this year and another the same next year that it would be appropriate for us to do that. I think we are working with the police and the Police and Crime Commissioner to see how we can work together to make the whole community safety world more efficient and more effective. And that is, to me, is probably the best way of doing that. So that's where I think we are. So I would not be recommending we support either of those motions, though I respect that they have been brought and I respect the fact that they have been brought in a very temperate manner, which I think is very good. The other thing I would say, just, there was a slight bit of political discussion, shall we say, from councillor Baxter. I think that's very unfair because what he said, because it's not about the Conservative government, he did acknowledge we've had the, well, first of all, in 2008, we had the banking crisis. And then recently, we've had the invasion of Ukraine and other things as well. So there has been unprecedented pressure and there has been unprecedented spending by this government. Even before the issue with Ukraine, there has been substantial extra spending. And if anybody thinks that Boris Johnson was a slasher of budgets, well, they weren't really watching very carefully. But like everywhere else, the government needs to balance its books. And we need to make sure that we spend within our means and make sure that money is spent effectively. So I think it was, it's all about quality, not quantity. And for example, he talked about all the terrible things that happened in Lincolnshire. It's all about quality, isn't it? And I'll just give the library services an example, as I've done before. We brought those changes in, and actually, we have more libraries open now and more library hours open before. And just like in the deepings, which I know councillor Dilks and Baxter know very well, actually, it's a better service because it's been run locally by local people with support from the county council. And actually, not only have we saved money, we've actually reinvigorated a local service which could be provided with volunteers. So on that, I recommend we approve the budget and regrettably will not be supporting the amendments. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Right. We now, yes, we now move to the vote, please. Our first vote is that can we have a recorded vote on the Labour motion, the Labour group amendment, please? Debbie, can you?
Thanks very much. I will read out the names of each member. Would those voting for the amendment say yes, and those voting against say no, and those abstaining say abstain? Councillor Allen. Councillor Ashton.
No.
Councillor Austin.
No.
Councillor Baxter.
Yes.
Councillor Blackburn.
No.
Councillor Bowles.
Yes.
Councillor Boquet.
No.
Councillor Bradwell OBE. Councillor Brockway.
No.
Councillor Brooks.
No.
Councillor Bunny.
Yes.
Councillor Butroyd.
No.
Councillor Carrington.
No.
Councillor Carter. Councillor Corey. Councillor Clark.
Yes.
Councillor Mike Clark.
No.
Councillor Nicola Clark.
No.
Councillor Cleaver.
Yes.
Councillor Cook. Councillor Coopland. Councillor Davies.
No.
Councillor Dilks.
Yes.
Councillor Dyer.
No.
Councillor Fleetwood.
No.
Councillor Gibson. Councillor Gray.
No.
Councillor Griggs.
No.
Councillor Hagues. Councillor Hall.
No.
Councillor Hill OBE.
No.
Councillor Kendrick.
No.
Councillor Key. Councillor King. Councillor Lee. Councillor Macy.
No.
Councillor Marfleet. Councillor Matthews.
No.
Councillor Morn.
No.
Councillor McNally.
No.
Councillor Overton MBE.
Yes.
Councillor Parkin.
Yes.
Councillor Pepper.
No.
Councillor Perrotton-Williams.
No.
Councillor Rawlins.
No.
Councillor Reed.
No.
Councillor Rowe.
Sorry, Chairman, he had to leave.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Seer. Councillor Skinner.
No.
Councillor Smith.
No.
Councillor Sneeath. Councillor Spratt.
No.
Councillor Stokes.
No.
Councillor Strangle.
No.
Councillor Taylor.
No.
Councillor Tyrell.
No.
Councillor Vernon.
No.
Councillor Whittington.
No.
Councillor Woolley. Councillor Wootton. And councillor Wright. And councillor Wright.
That was, do we need to know the numbers? That, that motion was lost with 11 councillors voting yes, 48 voting no and no abstentions. Thank you. We now move to, excuse me, where are we next? The recorded vote, please, on the independent group amendment. Right, Debbie, thank you.
Thank you very much. Same thing, I'll read out the names of each member. Would those voting for the amendment say yes and those voting against say no and those abstaining say abstain? Councillor Allen. Councillor Ashton.
No.
Councillor Austin.
No.
Councillor Baxter.
Yes.
Councillor Blackburn.
No.
Councillor Bowles.
Yes.
Councillor Boquet.
No.
Councillor Bradwell OBE.
No.
Councillor Brockway.
No.
Councillor Brooks.
No.
Councillor Bunny.
Yes.
Councillor Butroyd.
No.
Councillor Carrington.
No.
Councillor Carter.
Aye.
Councillor Corey.
No.
Councillor Clark.
Yes.
Councillor Mike Clark.
No.
Councillor Nicola Clark.
No.
Councillor Cleaver.
Yes.
Councillor Cook.
No.
Councillor Coopland.
No.
Councillor Davies.
No.
Councillor Dilks.
Yes.
Councillor Dyer.
No.
Councillor Fleetwood.
No.
Councillor Gibson.
Yes.
Councillor Gray.
No.
Councillor Griggs.
No.
Councillor Hall.
No.
Councillor Hill OBE.
No.
Councillor Kendrick.
No.
Councillor Key.
No.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Lee.
Yes.
Councillor Macy.
No.
Councillor Marfleet.
No.
Councillor Matthews.
No.
Councillor Morn.
No.
Councillor McNally. Councillor, Mrs Overton MBE.
Yes.
Councillor Parkin.
Yes.
Councillor Pepper.
No.
Councillor Perrott and Williams.
No.
Councillor Rawlins.
No.
Councillor Reed.
No.
Councillor Seer.
No.
Councillor Skinner.
No.
Councillor Smith.
No.
Councillor Sneath.
No.
Councillor Spratt.
No.
Councillor Stokes.
No.
Councillor Strangle.
No.
Councillor Taylor.
No.
Councillor Tyrell.
No.
Councillor Vernon.
No.
Councillor Whittington.
No.
Councillor Woolley. Councillor Wootton.
No.
And councillor Wright.
All right, the voting was as before with 48 voting no and 11 voting yes and no abstentions. So that amendment then falls. And we move now to the original substantive motion. So can we have a recorded vote, please, on the Conservative group motion? Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you very much. Again, same thing for those voting for the substantive motion. Please, those voting for say yes, those voting against say no and those abstaining say abstain. Councillor Allen.
Yes.
Councillor Ashton.
Yes.
Councillor Austin.
Yes.
Councillor Baxter.
Abstain.
Councillor Blackburn.
Yes.
Councillor Bowles.
Abstain.
Councillor Boquet.
Yes.
Councillor Bradwell OBE.
Yes.
Councillor Brockway.
Yes.
Councillor Brooks.
Yes.
Councillor Bunny.
Abstain.
Councillor Butroyd.
Yes.
Councillor Carrington.
Yes.
Councillor Carter.
Yes.
Councillor Corey.
Yes.
Councillor Clark.
Abstain.
Councillor Mike Clark.
Yes.
Councillor Nicola Clark.
Yes.
Councillor Cleaver.
Abstain.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Coopland.
Yes.
Councillor Davies.
Yes.
Councillor Dilks.
Abstain.
Councillor Dyer.
Yes.
Councillor Fleetwood.
Yes.
Councillor Gibson.
Yes.
Councillor Gray.
Yes.
Councillor Griggs.
Yes.
Councillor Hall.
Yes.
Councillor Hill OBE.
Yes.
Councillor Kendrick.
Yes.
Councillor Key.
Yes.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Lee.
Abstain.
Councillor Macy.
Yes.
Councillor Marfleet.
Yes.
Councillor Matthews.
Yes.
Councillor Morn.
Yes.
Councillor McNally.
Yes.
Councillor Overton MBE.
Abstain.
Councillor Parkin.
Yes.
Councillor Pepper.
Yes.
Councillor Perrott and Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Rawlins.
Yes.
Councillor Reed.
Yes.
Councillor Seer.
Yes.
Councillor Skinner.
Yes.
Councillor Smith.
Yes.
Councillor Sneath.
Yes.
Councillor Spratt.
Yes.
Councillor Stokes.
Yes.
Councillor Strangle.
Yes.
Councillor Taylor.
Yes.
Councillor Tyrell.
Yes.
Councillor Vernon.
Yes.
Councillor Whittington.
Yes.
Councillor Woolley.
Yes.
Councillor Wootton.
Yes.
And councillor Wright. Thank you.
And the voting for that, please? Was it, was it a recorded vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Right, that was therefore 51 voting yes, nil votes no and eight abstentions. So that then is clearly carried. Thank you very much and thank you for your discipline, all of you, while speaking. We will now move on swiftly as possible, please, to item number seven, the pay policy statement for 2023/24, which is on page 19, if you've still got your original papers. That's been circulated. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move the pay policy statement. This is a statute requirement, has to come to this meeting every year according to government legislation. The pay policy panel did meet a fortnight ago. There are no substantive changes, so there's nothing, it's laid out what our pay policy is and all the rest of it. So I'll just move the paper.
Thank you, councillor. Is there a second?
I formally second, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers? Then if that's the case, we will move then straight to the vote. Those in favour, please show. That looks unanimous. Any abstentions? Right, thank you then, that is. Right, we move on to number eight, item number eight, the border to coast governance arrangements. Councillor Strangle, I've been advised that you will be moving this now. The report has been circulated, so would you like to please move it?
Thank you, Chairman. I have been strangled in the past, by the way, but it's strangle. And I'm sure there's a few in here that probably would like to do the same. What do you mean, agreed? Chairman, in moving the changes within the border to coast governance arrangements, as they're on the recommendations there in page 37. I'd just like to put some meat on the bones regarding border to coast because a lot of people won't know it unless you're actually on the pensions committee. Border to coast is one of eight pools within the UK and these pools consist of a lot of officers, as you would imagine, and of course, a varying number of chairmen. The joint committee stretches from Cumbria in the north right down to Surrey in the south and there are 11 chairmen, of which I am one of them. They're on page 47, by the way, after the agenda, if you wish to see where they are from. We meet periodically and we keep the limited company, which is Border Coast Pension Partnership, in check. We're almost making decisions on behalf of Lincolnshire and indeed for all the other counties within the country. Our main objective is to deal with environmental, social and government issues with an emphasis on responsible investment. So we're looking very closely at companies that want to invest into our pension funds and the fund managers, et cetera, and we hold them to account. And we hold Border to Coast as a limited company working on our behalf to account to make sure that they deliver the savings that's required throughout our pool and indeed to make sure that we reduce fund managers' fees because before the pooling started, fund managers' fees were astronomical, they've come down quite a lot. I'll briefly say that Border to Coast is well renowned and revered for its performance within the eight pools. And I say this because we meet in various conferences, in the LGA, the Local Authority Pension Fund Forum, which I'm a member of, and the Scheme Advisory Board commend Border to Coast on numerous occasions and we do quite well in them. Now, I expect, of course, after that exciting explanation, I would expect to form an orderly queue outside the chief pension officers to join our committee here in Lincoln. But amendments to the governance, I recommend, so therefore, Chairman, I move the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And councillor Whittington, I believe you are due to second this, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm happy to second this. Councillor Strangle has highlighted admirably how the relationship between the Pensions Committee and Border to Coast, so I'm happy to second this motion. Thank you.
Are there any speakers? All indicated. Seeing none then, we move to the vote. Those in favour, please show. Looks unanimous. Those against? Any abstentions? No? Right, thank you very much, councillors. Right, we'll move swiftly on again then to item nine, the audit, I'm sorry, the Audit Committee Annual Report for 2022, which has been circulated, I believe. Councillor, Mrs Rawlings, are you wishing to speak?
Hi, Madam Chairman, if that's appropriate. So I would like to propose that all council receives the report that you have in front of you. If I could address the report now prior to councillor Allen's seconding, would that be appropriate? Okay. So the report is before you. Apologies from the committee for it being a little late this year. That was due in the main to us awaiting the final audit opinion on the 2022 accounts. That has been delayed due to very technical reasons on the valuation of infrastructure assets, which I will not go into at this stage if it's a technical accountancy issue, but this is a national issue, not just for Lincolnshire County Council. So it's something that the external auditors generally are addressing at the moment. So that is why we didn't bring in this report before Christmas. The issues that we've looked at this year are in part some things we've been looking at over the previous 12 months as well. The cybersecurity and business continuity issues, I think, as you see later on in the report, have somewhat a limited assurance on that. But having said that, I think we all have to accept that this is going to be an ongoing risk to this authority and others because of just the nature of cybersecurity threats generally throughout our economy and indeed throughout the world. We've also looked at IT infrastructure and we're obviously in the process of implementing business world on and upgrading our financial software, as we refer to later on in the report. So again, the committee are anxious to look at that on an ongoing basis as well because that's still a work in progress. And I think we're all aware of the staffing and recruitment retention issues, both to this council and other local authorities and indeed across the economy, and we are facing the staying pressures of other organisations. That's something else we've been focusing on. And again, as councillor Hill alluded to in his budget speech, the inflation and cost pressures, both on the capital and revenue budgets, have been intense. And again, that's a focus that we're going to be keeping on those in our next year's work as well. And again, in adult social care, we have had issues particularly coming out of the pandemic with market supply and we're looking to how the budget within social care affects the county council as well in terms of Better Care Fund and issues that are coming out of central government. So on that note, I would like to request that you receive the report and welcome any comments, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, is there a second, please? Councillor Allen?
There is a second, Chairman, it's me. I'm very happy to second the motion.
Thank you. Are there any speakers, any councillors wishing to speak? Right, then we move swiftly on again. Please vote in the usual manner. Those in favour, please show. Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That then, I think, is clearly carried unanimously. Right, that takes us on then to the, I might say, the interesting part of the agenda, that is motions on notice submitted in accordance with the council's constitution. We have a motion, I believe councillor Dilks, would you like to move your emotion and your motion, sorry? And I just stress that I'm moving on quickly because I don't really want us to be having a second break now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't think this should take a huge amount of time. I do regret, of course, that in the budget debate earlier, given the current financial climate, the administration did not feel able to support the Police and Crime Commissioner and Chief Constable with a financial contribution to protect community policing and prevent the cuts of almost half the police community support officers who we currently rely on across our county.
But I'm ever hopeful, this motion, separate to earlier, also seeks to support both the PCC and the chief constable and policing across Lincolnshire. But the good news is this one won't cost you a penny. It's in two parts, asks, as you can see, asks the PCC and the chief constable to work together to examine every possible option to avoid the proposed cuts to PCSOs. And secondly, supports their work in lobbying government to achieve the long-promised fairer funding formula for Lincolnshire Police and other police forces, and asks for, and their request for interim financial support until that new formula takes place. As councillor Bradwell said earlier, on February the third, the cross-party police and crime panel unanimously expressed extreme concern at the proposed cuts to PCSOs. We urge the PCC to work with the chief to examine all options and express support for their efforts on the national stage for fairer funding. I've deliberately used similar wording in this motion to that used by the police and crime panel. As we've heard, the budget settlement for this council maybe turned out to be slightly more generous than we were expecting. But the police budget turned out to be a little less generous than they were expecting. And before Christmas, the chief constable told us at that meeting that he was looking to increase the numbers of PCSOs across the county. But obviously, when the final funding came in, that's changed. And, you know, I and others and the police and crime panel appreciate the position that he's in. But we're not, also, we're not the only area facing cuts to PCSOs as a result of the, if I can say hoops, that the government are placing in their funding and the requirements to sort of jump through those hoops. Our police and crime commissioner has rightly put community policing at the heart of his crime plan. And PCSOs are at the heart of the neighbourhood policing teams. And I think we all, you know, I didn't hear broadly a bad word said against PCSOs. They've been there twenty years, they've become part of the police family. They provide valued reassurance to the public on crime matters, whether antisocial behaviour. They do actually help in the fight against crime, and they provide visibility on the streets that, you know, regular police officers, how often do we all hear, we never see a regular police officer on the street. Losing almost half of the PCSOs this year will undoubtedly have an impact on the communities that we represent. I do hear what councillor Hill says, yes, the extra regulars that are being brought back, that were cut some years ago, are welcomed and will fill some of those holes. But I do feel the PCSO service is becoming a bit of a Cinderella service and easy to cut one year and then boost, bring them back the next year. It just seems a bit daft to me. So I do ask for your support across, you know, across the chamber. I think it is, I say this in a non-political way, I really do ask for your support in this. And I think it is something that we can, that we can actually show our support for our PCC and the chief constable and policing across Lincolnshire and our residents that we represent. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Now, do I have a second, councillor Bunny?
Thank you Chair, I'm very happy to second this motion and reserve my right to speak later.
Right, we have some speakers, I believe councillor Hill?
Thank you Madam Chairman, very happy to support this motion because I think it is a very timely and relevant issue. In particular, as we've already discussed, the funding formula is particularly poor for Lincolnshire Police. They are, as somebody has said previously, the worst funded by some way in the whole country. And although there are continued promises that that will be resolved, so far hasn't happened. And I think one of the big disappointments, I understand, for the chief constable was that he was hoping for some relief for such an outlier. They're not just slightly the worst funded, they are by a long way the worst funded. And the formula is flawed, and it is regrettable that the government so far has failed to actually address that. So I would say that as a Conservative, so when councillor Baxter is tweeting about Conservatives doing this and Conservatives doing that, I think we just need to be clear that this is a non-political item actually. In terms of also, so I particularly support the funding, but also, as I've said earlier, we do work with the police because we have a joint agenda on community safety and all sorts of things. So we can work and talk to them about how them could be made better. But I just repeat the point that we're not talking about a loss, of total loss of forty-one PCSOs. There is actually an increase, more than increase, there are a hundred and twenty-five, as I said earlier, extra people in uniform. I don't know what the situation is with special constables, of course, but there are a hundred and twenty-four extra people in uniform who are regular employees extra in the county. So to me, there also needs to be a conversation about community policing, which we all value. And we do need to make sure that some of those, or ask that some of those extra police officers are dedicated to community policing. And in the past, as we all know, there were teams across the county typically headed up with a sergeant, who would have a team of PCSOs and specials, who would just be dedicated to local policing. And I think it's a concern to all of us that that would appear to be at risk. And I think there needs to be a serious conversation with the chief constable particularly, that we do need to make sure that there is extra resource there, that that local policing, that community policing is actually preserved and protected. And the one big advantage of PCSOs is they are area-based mostly, whereas police constables tend to be drafted all over the place, which is a challenge. So I fully support the motion, but I think there are some hard questions to be asked about what the deployment of the increased establishment the chief constable is currently enjoying.
Thank you councillor Mrs Overton.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to support the motion and thank the leader for those good comments. I think this is about making sure that we get the support into our county. We have been underfunded for a long time. And basing it just on crime numbers or incidents numbers is one approach. But the problem for a rural area like ours is that it gets to the point where the blue line is so thin that when we need that support, it doesn't arrive. And that, I think, is the fear that we want to avoid. So I would strongly support the point about neighbourhood policing. I know we called for it before, and they said they were going to reduce the numbers of police in order to enhance the PCSOs, and that was how we were going to get neighbourhood policing. So I think it will have to be a change of thinking. You know, we'll really need to get a change of thinking in there to make sure that these police are kept locally. And I think the point about the partnership fund, I think, still retains in my mind, and perhaps that's something we can work towards in the future, because all of our councils have the power of wellbeing, meaning that we are responsible for the wellbeing of our residents. And that does mean that we can work in partnership with other organisations to get the improvements that our residents need. So it might be that we can't do it this time, but it might be that we can do it in the future by working with other organisations and laying, and calling on central government particularly to give us our fair share. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Overton. Councillor Mrs Lee?
Karen Lee? Thank you Chair. I just wanted to speak in support from our side for councillor Dilks's motion. I think it's important as well to recognise that PCSOs actually have quite a different role to police officers. I've been a councillor for a long time, I started in 2004 in Carham. And we had a PCSO, Pete, and he was amazing. What he didn't know wasn't worth knowing. And I think that people often have a different relationship with PCSOs to police, and that's not to demean either. They have the same aim at the end of it all, but they do perform different roles. So I don't necessarily believe that losing some people and gaining in other ways actually makes it up. And as I say in jest too, we're used to some pretty tight votes in this chamber. It's nice to know that we're united on this. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies to the manner in which I described you. Thank you. Councillor Kevin Clark?
Thank you Chairman. April 2022, only ten months ago, the force was recruiting for more PCSOs. So the value of that situation was recognised. However, now looking at a further reduction in their numbers, which was at one time a hundred and forty, Lincolnshire is the bottom of the table in funding for any force in the UK, and with the lowest officers and staff per head of population. The motion says it all. Glad the council looks like they're going to support the motion. And who knows, there might be some levelling ups in the funding.
Thank you. Councillor Rowe, I can't find you.
Thank you Madam Chairman. This is one of the items that I've been most approached about by my residents. So in North and South Hycam, we've just celebrated twenty years of one of our PCSOs, a very popular police lady who's done a super job. She's the lady that the vicar rings up when he's ill with Covid because he's worried that one of his flock haven't come to church for the last two weeks, and he can't get out to see her because he's ill. She goes out and she sorts it and sees the resident and finds out that they're ill and gets support there. These are the people that, when an elderly gentleman in his house was getting his fence permanently kicked in every other week, that not only helped get the people that were doing it, but also managed to get one of the local building firms to come and pay for the repair of the fence after, I think, about the fourth time. These are true community police people that help our areas, that know the people in the area and get involved. They're the ones that walk through the parks at night to make sure the vandalism's not happening. They're the ones that talk to the young people in the groups in a way that discourages them from some of their more lively activities. So I must support this motion. I'm very concerned that we're going to lose some of the best policing, certainly within my area. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Carrington?
Yes, thank you very much Chairman. It's true, of course, that operational matters are a matter for the chief constable. But I think what we've heard this morning, or indeed just into this afternoon, demonstrates that there is concern right across this chamber about having visible, community-based policing. And the motion refers to PCSOs, and I think PCSOs, there was a certain amount of doubt about them when they first came in, the whole business of policing light. I think that over the years we've had PCSOs, they have absolutely demonstrated the way that they can play such a valuable role in the community. And indeed, I think they've become part of communities, as councillor Rowe and others have so eloquently said. Those with long memories will remember thirty, well, maybe even forty years ago, there was going to be a revolution in the way that policing was done. Bobbies on the beat were absolutely too old-fashioned, technology was going to take over. What we found was that suddenly the police, who had been on the beat in communities, were behind the windows of their cars or the walls of their police station. I don't know whether anybody in the room thinks that worked, I'm certainly not sure that it did. Invisible policing simply doesn't work. What we need are more uniforms on the street, particularly in the rural areas of our county. We need more of them visiting, visibly visiting our smaller villages, larger villages and our towns, not sitting behind the walls of Nettleland Police HQ or behind the windows of a patrol car parked up somewhere. What we want is community policing in this chamber. What our residents want is community policing. So I believe that this motion should send a strong message to the chief constable and the PCC. Community policing is what we want, and I'm very happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Have I missed anyone else who wishes to speak before we go to the vote? You would like the right to reply, obviously?
Yes, just very quickly, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments tonight, sorry, this afternoon. It does seem to me that, it does seem to me that we are all of opinion that we do need to see the policemen out there or police presence out there on the streets. I think we lose a lot by having the vehicle around. And I think actually, whilst in market raisin, I know that we can have six to eight police personnel in the police station, many of them in rapid response cars, many be on roadwork, and actually, all we've seen is rushing around in their cars, sometimes on blue lights. What we actually need is getting those people out into the community, talking to people and communicating. I think they get, those who do a very good job, get a bad press because they're not able to be out there doing the work. The only other thing I would say is that we do need to look at the reporting process. I don't know, the other day I reported a crime. If I'd gone on phone, it would have taken me an hour and forty minutes. If I look at the website, it still took me twenty minutes to get the incident across. And then I don't think I got any visit until I actually spoke to the inspector myself directly when I happened to bump into him in Gainsborough. So I think there's a lot to be said, as councillor Hill says, that we need to look at the way that the community is pleased. And I would welcome that as well as us lobbying the, or helping the lobbying for fairer funding. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bunny. I will just be inviting councillor Dilks to come back if he wishes. But before that, I'll just take my own opportunity to comment how much we value our local PCSs, I think PCSOs, sorry. It's the first point of call for many residents. But interestingly, when I've talked to some of them, they choose to remain as a PCSO rather than the traditional bobby, as we perhaps think. And I think that speaks for itself. Thank you. Councillor Dilks, do you wish to come back?
Madam Chairman, I only wish to say thank you colleagues, everyone from councillor Hill to everyone across the chamber for recognising the value of PCSOs. As I think it was councillor Carrington said, when they were first brought in, it was about twenty years ago, they were almost figures of fun, I should say. And they have moved on, and they have proved themselves as part of the police family. I think a good value for money as well. That's all I'd say. I'd just say thank you. Please vote so that we send a unanimous signal to the chief constable and the PCC. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dilks. Right, if there are no more speakers, then we will move to the vote. Those in favour please show? Clearly carried, but we better just check, are there any against or any abstentions? Right, well, thank you very much councillors for that very well-tempered, well-behaved debate. And please take your papers with you when you leave. Thank you, thank you very much. Is the food outside?
No, don't mention it.
No, right, thank you.